Good afternoon, I'll call this workshop session to order. First item of business is a discussion regarding additional school resource officers for LISD.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna be very brief and turn over a majority of the discussion and information to Chief Cummings. As Council was informed, I believe by email last week, we have been approached by LISD regarding the addition of some school resource officers. The addition of two, we currently have three. One at the high school, one at the middle school, and then one as a floater on the elementary side. There's several items that we would ask Council's input on this evening. From my end, you know, what other additional investigation would you like us to undertake? Jody will go over some, what I would consider rough estimates of those costs. I think the other thing that the Mayor and I had a discussion on was what is the opportunity that we have, maybe not for this particular incident, but for other types of needs that the jurisdictions might have for us to better communicate. I think, best case, this was last minute in terms of their approach to the city. And we'd wanna try to minimize any of those types of last-minute items in the future. And then if Council wishes for us to proceed, we'd ask that you give it some thought in terms of under what conditions, in terms of either a cost methodology or utilization of those resources. And finally, based on our discussion tonight, which I hope is full and complete, we'd ask that you, if you do wanna move forward, that you'd provide us the direction to negotiate and develop an inter-local agreement for Council consideration at a future time. We're a long way from getting there, and I know that you probably have a lot of informations. And as I said, Jody and Chief Cummings is probably better suited to answer those, so I'll defer to the Chief at this time.
Before you leave, Finley, I'm sorry, I would like to ask, has anyone researched whether there are any federal funds for the school to make use of instead of coming straight to us?
If Chief Cummings might be able to address that. I am unaware of any, but that's something that may be an option.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Not aware of any federal funds right now that are being broadcast blanketly to increase the number of officers in the school. I wonder if that might not come in the future when we have situations like recently that have brought this to the forefront again. Our first school officer, Tim Ryan, was the product of some federal funds back in 1994. It placed him and an additional juvenile probation officer at our juvenile probation department. So that's how we got started with our first SRO. But I'm not aware of any right now as far as a large program without trying to research and find some niche somewhere, though. But they're not putting them out there blanketly like this to try to get a bunch of SROs at one time. So, just a recap, Dr. Rasko had reached out to me around the first week of June, about a week to two after the unfortunate incident in Uvalde, just to kinda feel us out where we were at with our officer program. He was aware that we were a few officers short at that time, but he said, "I'm, as usual, getting some inquiries about how many SROs, what our plans are in the future, and this happens after we have an incident." So, reminded him that at that time, we had three getting ready to graduate the academy that we had in field training, that had taken us quite a while to get those placed because of the difficulty finding officers, and that we would have one opening that we were about to advertise. So, told him be glad to move forward if he and/or his school board wanted us to visit about it on our end to see if that was an option and how to proceed. But he was just getting his groundwork at that time, he wanted to be prepared. A few weeks later, he gave me another phone call just to check in, let him know that we had our cadets successfully graduated and were out on the road getting trained. We had advertised for that additional officer, which meant we were really four down. Our new officers would be out of training in September, which would put us a little short during that first month of school when our SROs went back to the road, which they're about to do next week, excuse me, back to the school and off the road. And we were looking at probably around October 1st before we would be fully staffed, optimistic that we were able to get someone hired for our one opening, which we're taking applications right now. So, again, he said he would let me know. So, over the last couple of weeks, there's been an increase in conversation between him and our current SROs and myself and a couple of employees and now the city manager. Seems like it's maybe picked up speed. I've come to learn from visiting around the last few days with a couple of other chiefs and departments that this is going on all around us. Of course, there is a great interest in increasing the SROs at campuses in all cities. So, the scuttle that we're doing now is not uncommon around us. So, I think with the school imminently approaching the opening day, I think the, I don't know if pressure is the word, but the discussion has increased all the way around between citizens, the school board, council, police, and so here we are. Other police departments, and especially in and around our size, are not unique that they're short on officers as are we. So, that makes the situation even more difficult to try to tackle and get solved anytime, you know, immediately, because we would have to go through the same process as everyone else. I've also learned that everybody handles these differently between the police and the city and school as far as how they place their officers, how they fund their officers, and there's not a one-size-fits-all. Reaching out to four police departments over the last couple of days around us to see how many officers they've had compared to how many campuses they have and how they work out their agreements between school and city, none are exact. And I don't wanna give exact names, 'cause I hate to come out loud and say who's got how many officers at what campuses. But I researched one agency near us that's a little larger than us, maybe twice, and their city as well, and their school district, and three others that are about our size. So, only one department has five campuses like us and has five officers positioned. And there's been some talk between that city and that school district about maybe having their own police department in the near future because of the number of officers they have. I don't know if that'll come to fruition, but they split their fees about half and half. But the police department, along with the city, is concerned with increasing prices and salary and raises about maybe doing some more negotiating about that in the future. One other city near us only has two, and they're about our size, but they're trying to place two more this next year. And they will have one at the high school, one at the middle school, and they will have, I'm sorry, two at a middle school, two middle schools, and they'll have a floater in between their elementary schools, which is what we do now. One high school, one middle school, and a floater between our three campuses. We have an agency near us that's probably twice our size, city, if not three times, about twice our size department, and probably the school district about twice our size. But they currently only have one officer at the high school, one at their middle school. But their school district wants to increase by three as quick as they can. And so, they are right now doing what we're doing, trying to figure out how to make that happen. And they would have a high school, they have two middle schools, one at each, and they would have a floater between their elementary schools. I think I've covered the ones I've called. So, all of their negotiations are different. Some are, one of them is a 70-30 percent as far as cost, just straight across the board. Another pays 70-30 on salary, and the police department just pays for their vehicles, but they're negotiating because that district wants to add officers about how they're gonna pay for the equipment in the future, because over time, like us, it's gotten much more expensive. It's more than just an officer and a car, now it's an officer with all of his equipment, and now it's his officer with all of his, you know, his guns and all of that, which we carry multiple these days. And then there's the body camera, there's the car camera. It's just a lot more than it used to be in 1994 when Tim Ryan initiated our SRO program at the high school with the used Jeep from DPS and himself. The expectations are more, it's in the, you know, the technologies here. So, it's not a one-size-fits-all. I think what's going on with our school is not unique to us. Everyone else is trying to figure out what the right amount of officers per schools is for their community, and they're also working with their respective police departments to try to figure out how to get it done. And it appears it's up to us to try to start that process and work with the school and see what we as the city and the school want to do and where we want to land in the near future. So, I think we at the police department and the city in general, we want to do everything we can to help assure the safety of all the school district's children and our visitors while they're here at our school events and attending school. And we're here to help at the police department, we're just waiting on our orders and let us know which direction and how fast and et cetera. You'd like us to go?
I know-
Mr. Mayor, have I left out any major point that we've discussed, or do you think? And I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to cut you off-
I'm always asking about who else is going to help us with the money, and so I'm going to ask about the county. Has the county ever been charged with contributing any money to this? And you probably don't know the answer to that.
To my knowledge, ma'am, I don't ever recall a discussion with the county about contributing to the school district's ability to fund officers. Not to say it didn't happen, and not to say a superintendent never discussed that with the sheriff, I'm just, I've never been privy to that-
Okay.
... or known to that, to have come up in discussion as far as, you know, their responsibility or to be considered part.
Okay, thanks.
I have one other question, because, you know, like you said, everybody's really unique and really different. We've got that one elementary school that's at Taylor Creek, which isn't, that technically in Copper's Cove ISD? I'm not ISD, excuse me, Copper's Cove City Limits?
I knew what you meant.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, how does jurisdictional stuff work there? Because like between here and there, it's definitely not the city of Landpasses, so I-
Sure. Well, it is in our school district, it is in our county, and it is in the city limits of Copper's Cove. It's very unique. And for the last two years, Sergeant Sheldon has been bouncing between Klein Whitehouse, Hannah Springs, and Taylor Creek. He puts it on our calendar and he tries to go just in a circle unless they have a unique event, and that's what we've been doing. I do know that, you know, Copper's Cove doesn't consider that one of their schools as far as the city, because again, the city, like us, is not the same boundary as the school district. So, it's not to say that, you know, they wouldn't wanna place someone there, but they are one of the, they are one of the towns I discussed that I had visited with that is trying to place additional SROs at this time based on what their school district is asking their city to do. So, I know that would be one more that they would try to find. And we're all, you know, drawing from the same pool, trying to find not only officers in general, but SROs. So, that'll add to the difficulty for both of us, you know, as far as to place someone specifically at that school. It would be a challenge. But I do know, I'm privy to some information about that school, and I know that they get good police service there. Copper's Cove has always been on the ball to go immediately if there's an emergency and show up, as has the City of Kempner Police, and our Sheriff's Department responds well. So, they get good police service when called.
Would that be something maybe we could look at with City of Kempner or maybe potentially Sheriff's Department, because it is in the county?
Yeah. Again, those are money decisions, and I think any questions on the table at this point, but not mine to make.
What's the breakdown on the SROs right now?
How we pay?
Yes, sir.
We have two that the school pays 75 percent, and we pay 25 percent.
Okay.
And originally, the philosophy was that during the summertime, a lot of vacations, our officers are off, and we try to schedule a lot of training during the summer as well. So, it's easy to incorporate them back into the schedule while some of our other officers are off doing training, kinda beneficial. But a few years ago, when the third position was added, I think it was the city's decision and the police departments that we really couldn't justify having a third person during the summer because we didn't have that much work on the schedule for them. And I think that's kinda where we're at now, trying to balance if we do add two as they've requested, how that's gonna work out, how much of it, you know, we should pay and how much they should pay, et cetera.
How would that, I mean, then you're gonna have that also balance happen in the summer because you've still got the months of June and July where you don't have kids on campus, right?
Yes, ma'am. So, just for instance, if we added two and the city said, "We're gonna pay 100 percent", we would put them on the road, we would have them doing something. But I can't come to you and say, "I need that many during the summer," but they would go to work and do something. Yes, ma'am.
What about equipment costs, is that all on the city?
Well, again, we have traditionally always paid for all of the equipment. They paid for the salary and their specific school resource officer training, particularly a conference that our officers have always gone to every summer. And they get all the basics and the updates there, and I think that's very important. And they have always paid for that specific training to the SRO program. But we have always paid for all of the equipment, everything they wear, the firearms, the car, the body cameras, the car camera and all of that. So, that, you know, that is a concern. So, we have three vehicles that, you know, we utilize nine months out of the year at the school, and we have them again during the summer. But going forward, those officers would need, in my opinion, everything that anybody else does, fully decked-out car. 'Cause I think what you're, you know, heaven forbid you ever have an incident, and I think we all know that it's astronomically, you know, that we would have one here, but it could and probably will unfortunately happen somewhere. But part of what I think you're paying for when you pay for that officer at a school is that police car sitting up front, which is a billboard that says, "There's a policeman here, ready to be a policeman." And I think that is deterrent. Will you ever know how many people might have been deterred? You never will know. But I think that's part of what you're paying for. Then again, if something unfortunate happened, that officer has equipment in that vehicle that he can't just walk around all day with. You know, breaching tools, a rifle, shooting, have to use it, and that stuff you can't just strap on and carry around. You know, even some medical supplies, you know, I could go on. If he had an incident where somebody did something, hopped in the car and left, and he needed to go after them, if he didn't have a vehicle, he wouldn't be able to, you know, he'd have his radio, that'd be best. I think they have to have a vehicle, it's just now how that's paid for, not my decision.
Can you give us a rough estimate of the cost of that equipment?
Sure. And not too rough, but we're estimating, you know, probably next year, about, probably $69,000 per vehicle. We were in the high fives this year, but everything has just gotten so expensive for a vehicle. I think 55 is what we paid last year for the car. By the time you deck it out with the cameras and the radar and all, we were looking at the mid 60s by the time we got through in this last year's budget with the two that we acquired. So, you know, add a little bit on percentage for inflation, guessing we're talking about 68 or 9, somewhere around there a piece for a car, for two cars, so 70,000 times two is 140. And those cars will last probably, especially if they stayed at the school. We get about eight to 10 years out of a patrol car on the street, not a school one, get around 100,000 miles. So, you know, at the school, if it stayed there, you know, in theory, it could last a long, long time. Probably the outside would wear off before the inside and the engine. But it is an expense that if we hired two officers now, that would have to be agreed upon and funded somehow.
And the rest of the equipment? How much do you figure for the rest of the-
Uniforms and rifles and all that? Oh, I'm gonna be very rough off the top of my head, 'cause I didn't add all that up, but I can. But I would guess 5,000, four by the time guns-
For-
... vest, rifle, you know, special extra vest, breaching equipment, full uniform, body camera.
So, we're talking-
Yes, 'cause that'd be separate from the vehicle, so the body camera'd be separate.
180,000, just roughly?
Roughly, yes, ma'am.
Just for the equipment?
How many are they officially asking for?
Two, with our meeting, yes, with our meeting last Friday, Thursday, Thursday.
And you currently have three dedicated?
Yes, sir. One at the high school, one at the middle school, and Steve Sheldon is a sergeant who supervises those twos and himself, and he bounces between the three elementary schools. So, if we added two, we'd have one at every campus, which is five. Right now, we have three.
The, everybody's been through that specialty training except the three new ones?
I'm sorry-
As far as the specialty training that it takes for that type of incident?
Well, yes. We, I'm very proud of our firearms training program that we've integrated for a number of years, and that's, Tim Ryan has done that for decades, and Will Sneed is coming up to be his assistant. And we've always integrated some kind of run, move, shoot, tumble into our standard firearms training program. And any of those things could be used if you had a shooter, whether it was school or not, anywhere in town. And we have, a number of us have been to a special school called Alert, which was initiated because of school shootings about 20 years ago, and it's just gotten better every year. I've been to several myself, most all of us have been, and even when we hire officers from outside, they've been. Maybe we've got one or two that are young that haven't specifically been, but most of us have been to it. And that's all about going to an active shooter and getting there quick and taking care of business. And so, we continue to integrate those skills and those schools into what we do every day. And although I think we've always done well since this incident last May in Uvalde, we have done some more alert online training with every one of our officers and our dispatchers. We have bought some more tools to help us breach doors that'll be placed in every one of the patrolman's cars. Sergeant, excuse me, Lieutenant Montgomery went to a two-day class last Thursday and Friday about breaching in numerous ways, doors, and he's brought that back so he can not only know how to do it, but to instruct us. Our Officer Sneed got with the fire department at Fire Chief Smith's request, because if we had something in the fire department, obviously would show up to help the ambulances. And Officer Sneed put together a program and has gone through it with every one of our firemen over the summer at one of our schools to practice going in with the policeman undercover to recover somebody injured and remove them. And again, this could be used anywhere, not just a school. So, that's the things we've done this summer to kick it up a notch, and I feel like we have already had a really good platform for that type of response for an agency our size with our resources, and we're looking to do more in the future and paying attention to what's going on.
I was wondering about the, because like on the school, and we're getting trained with standard response protocol, but the, who's training us are the SROs, so have all of y'all gone through that training to?
Probably not as in-depth as what y'all are doing at the school, but our SROs have brought it back. We have the manuals that y'all have, and we discussed it in-house, so that we have an idea of what's expected of y'all should we show up, you know, to respond.
Now, we-
Then would you be thinking of the two that are, if they come online, when they would be applicable to be there? Are you gonna take two out of house and move them over there and then short yourself for a while, or what are we gonna do?
All to be discussed and figured out, but again, with the difficulty of getting officers right now onboard, we can't lower our standards to get someone here with us working for the city just to place them. That wouldn't be good for the school or us, just to say we've done it. But if this is something that the school and the city wants done, and we were given our orders to do it, we're not gonna drag our feet, and we will get on it, and we will do the best we can to get the information out, recruit, get, you know, not just in the standard ways, but through the school resource officer venues. I think it's actually a very good job. A lot of people might not wanna do that job, 'cause they don't see it as exciting or maybe in other ways that they would wanna leave the streets and go do. So, if I don't have anybody interested in-house in moving immediately to one of those positions, then we could advertise specifically for someone to go to the school. And that way, it wouldn't aggravate passing up someone in-house. And you need a handful of years of experience, not maybe just specifically as an SRO, but we couldn't put someone right out of the police academy like some that we have just got on the road in training now at the school. That just couldn't be done. But if we were able to go out and advertise, we might get lucky, and we might get some interested, experienced officers that might wanna come even finish out their career here, 'cause they had already done all that fun road stuff, and they might look forward to something like that.
And then you would just, on the months the schools are out, the time schools are out, you would just put those officers in their normal duties?
Yes, sir, we would. 'Cause they would have to be, you know, 365-
Either normal duties or training or-
Yeah, training or out on the street working, filling in. You know, if I was, how that, you know, the split on that and the money and all, that's not my concern. But if you told me to get them, and we got them throughout the year, and now we've got two additional SROs, come summertime, they work for us and we'll put them out on the road working. We'll find something to do. We'll foot patrol parks and see if we can help Chris with some of this graffiti. I mean, we're not just gonna sit at the office, we'll find stuff to do for them.
I can appreciate your response to this request here. To me, it's last minute, and I'm very disappointed in that, and I'm also disappointed I don't have anybody from the school here to at least represent on their self. You know, they put us in a situation where we don't have much choice, just to at least move forward on this year, in my opinion. I don't know how the rest of the council thinks about it, but I also think we need to set a specific meeting to deal with the school board or members of that, or combination administration and school board.
I agree with you, Randy. I'm disappointed that the school district is not here to give a little more detail of what they're looking for and when and how. Seems like it's all falling on the city to make it work for them. And I'm not objectionable to that. I think we're in a situation where we damned if we do and damned if we don't.
Yeah, I can appreciate your attitude towards it, and thank you for jumping on things to get information back to us.
You're welcome. I have several people on my staff helping me, and I think they've done a good job. And irregardless of those things, I appreciate your comments, but as your police chief, it's my concern for safety, and if y'all tell me to get two officers, we're gonna work hard to get the best two we can, not any faster than we can, 'cause I don't wanna mess up.
Sure, I understand.
We'll do a good job, and we'll get them here and we'll get them staffed. I'll let y'all work out those details, though.
Chief, I got a loaded question for you.
Yes, sir.
Know that our officers are highly trained and even have more training than maybe in other jurisdictions for situations like this. Do you feel the need that we actually need two more school resource officers as police chief? I'm sorry.
It's a tough spot, 'cause here, you know-
I know, I'm sorry.
It's like Chuck just said, you know, damned if you do, damned if you don't. You know, if you would've asked me in April, I'd have probably said no.
Right.
You asked me June 1st, of course, 'cause I just watched what all of y'all watched unfold horrifically and still unfold, and then the questions will never be answered. So, standing right here now in front of y'all for the world to see, we need two more officers, we need one at every campus, and I'm the husband of a retired educator. I know what happens at campuses. It can be very dicey, very quick.
With response times, though, within the city and us being a smaller city, I mean, how quickly can someone just on patrol that's not SRO get to a school?
Well, fortunately with our city, we can get usually from one side to the other very fast.
Right.
And we had a situation last Thursday afternoon, turned out to not be anything bad, but with all of the training and the talk with the school and all of that, someone saw what they thought might be a suspicious person near one of our campuses last Thursday. We had three officers there probably within, you know, a couple of minutes. I'll have to go look at the times I'm averaging, but talking to them, I know we had three officers there late afternoon on a campus immediately, coming from different areas of the town. And fortunately, it didn't turn out to be what they thought, but better safe than sorry, and that's exactly what we're teaching our educators and our citizens to do right now concerning our schools and our campuses. So, it was a good practice run.
So, let's say we got two more school resource officers, and then in a year or two, don't really feel like there's a need for them at the schools anymore, what happens then?
Well, you know, again, that's up for the policymakers to decide, and they said, you know, if the school and y'all said, "Cut them," I guess we, through attrition, would cut them. But that would agitate police officers greatly, especially if we have to work this hard to place them. And I think that's a good point. As y'all are thinking this through, I think we need to think about systematically having a program for the future that's built right and continues, which we have now. So, I don't think we should make knee-jerk decisions, but if we're gonna go forward, let's come up with, 'cause going from three to five, again, that's a lot. We had one, we added one to the middle school over time. As our population and our campus populations increase, now we have a floater. You'll see these continuing, so I think maybe it's time to come up with a little more firm and official agreement, and, 'cause I believe now we just have a handshake and we exchange bills, you know? And that's worked, that's nothing wrong with that. But I'd sure hate to look at this down the road and start letting people go, 'cause then at that point, if you had something happen in a campus, even if it wasn't an active shooter, maybe just a bad situation, a domestic or a child custody dispute that went violent, and you had had an officer on that campus the year before, and now they're not there, who knows if they could've stopped it or not, but the accusations would start and fingers would point that we could have. So, I don't think that would be good for the school or the city to pull an officer once you've had them at a campus. We're not gonna get smaller, the situations aren't gonna get easier. It's, you know, the population is just a reflection of what's going on around us.
What if, okay, 'cause they've asked for two officers, so you have one per campus, and that would be really hard to do really, really quick, especially under this budgetary, you know? And to, what if, what if we increased, what if we were able to figure out a way to do one more officer that would then give the three elementary schools more coverage, even though not 24/7 coverage? And it may be easier to find the monies to do that, because it would be a reduced cost, and you wouldn't be having to find two extra people, jobs to do over the summer, it would just be one.
Again, ma'am, as quick as I'm giving the marching orders, we'll, one, two, we might get lucky and find two really quick, or one, but that, again, that's up for y'all to decide with the school, and be glad to get as many as you think we need as quick as we can and work hard on it. We're already making some inquiries amongst some, you know, people we know that have worked in the business that we rub elbows with, to see if we can find anybody interested in our town to come here and work for us, so.
Would it make sense to bring the county into this discussion as well as the school?
Definitely need someone from the school, I think. Can we, wouldn't you get that?
Absolutely, for the school. I'm thinking the county as well.
Those are money concerns, I'll let y'all.
Well, if we all share the cost, it's a it's a lot easier bite than just the city taking full responsibility.
Benly, can you make that happen or or propose it? Rather than all this go back and forth, no one really wants to make a decision on this.
I think the the, you know, at this point, I think there are two different ways to look at it. Right now, it's it's kind of a two two-party conversation between the school district. And the identification is of us as a entity that can provide that resource. I cannot speak for the sheriff or the county, albeit, you know, they've had some some hiring struggles, some vacancy struggles. But I I certainly don't pretend to speak for Chief Ramos. In terms of communication, I think, as I talked to the mayor about this. We need to be sitting down once a month. And not just, I I mean, I mean, we need the president of their board, the superintendent, county judge. The the next person in the county judge's office that can come forward or another commissioner. And we need to be sitting around the table once a month, even if we don't have anything to talk about. But I think this just, I mean, if we had had this conversation and they said, hey, we'd really like you to start a hard investigation on this two or three months ago. Chief Cummings would have come into my office and said, hey, we need to go ahead and put this on the council agenda, we don't like doing this to you. The other thing I'll say that that maybe hadn't been said before, maybe Jody said this, we all have the same goal. I mean, we we want to have a safe community, we want to be visible, we want to be good stewards of resources. And we think that this is a compelling request, you know, that that it's probably appropriate for council to react to. I think we've got to change some of the culture between the entities down the line so that we, like I said, we can sit around the table once a month and and discuss what each other's needs are, but.
I think sooner rather than later for that meeting too, Benly.
Yes, ma'am. And you know, I think that some of the things that were asked for you, we, and I think some of this, you know, I think is incumbent on the school district to reach out, you know, have we, have you checked resources with Kempner, with the county, with with? And and I think Councilman Burkini had a had a good point, you know, we. And and this isn't the reason to provide service or not provide service, we were asked to if we could fulfill this. But even though we may only pay for a portion of those salaries, that portion that's being paid is paid for from our tax dollars or taxpayers. And we don't have a whole lot of taxpayers in the city of Coppers Cove. And that's not a reason not to provide the service, that's something though to consider as you're as you're evaluating. You know, what is that cost, cost methodology, et cetera. But there are a lot of, a lot of pieces to the puzzle and the only thing I've done is a good job of talking in circles. But that's the situation we're in.
I just want to go on record as saying, I think I feel the frustration from all of council that immediately after the incident this summer, we did ask for an executive session with Chief Cummings, who provided us with what our department is doing, what we're trying to make happen. And at that point, it would have been the right point, the right time for the school district to say, we need some help, we need these these two or three resource officers, whatever they needed, but they didn't come forward. And I think that's a frustration for all of us that that we've been here all summer working towards what we think was a balanced budget and now we're getting thrown could be as much as three or four hundred thousand dollars to put into our budget. And I think that's a frustration, I know it is for me, I don't know about the rest of you, but it's very frustrating to to deal with that.
At this point though, I would, I would think that from my standpoint, Chief Cummings needs to be prepared to move forward at a short notice, apparently.
And I think a a next step that council may want to consider voicing by consensus or or through this workshop item is, you know, giving staff the authority to sit down and begin those discussions and also begin the recruitment process. The the budget impact, you are fortunate, as you have been told over the last, well, probably the last year. We we do those periodic fund balance assessments. And so if we had to buy a couple of cars, the city can do that, we're financially healthy, we can do that without it really interfering with our fund balance policy. So that's something that can happen. I think, you know, the cost for twenty-five percent of one officer is probably gonna be in the range of thirty thousand to forty thousand dollars. But we we do have, you know, that big ticket, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar cost in terms of making sure they have the equipment they need to perform their jobs. We can make that happen, I I guess so. If if you, if if I had to take it out of what we currently have in our operating budget, then you would have a staff person here saying, you cannot pave streets to the extent you paved paved them last year. We have to put less pipe in the ground or we have to not put as much money into our water treatment plant. Fortunately, that's not the position the city of Lampasus is in.
So right now, what do you need from us, a nod or?
Any any additional comments, if you'd like us to sit down. I do think that it's very important that we have a formal inter- local agreement, a new one, related to this. And and we can come back with you in terms of starting points, starting deal points that we've talked to the school district about. And go ahead and move this process forward if that's if that's what council would like to see us do.
Would you also set up a meeting?
We could, I I I would suggest a smaller group meeting. Sometimes it it gets a little cumbersome between two people on each side of a dais. But one or two or three council reps and one or two or three school board reps, less than a quorum around a round table, so.
I mean, I'm kind of seeing right now, time is of the essence is kind of what I'm hearing. If you give Jody the go-ahead and begin to start looking for those officers.
And we'll begin to negotiate with the school.
And then we begin to negotiate with the school, that way we're at least not kicking the can down the road another month or two months or whatever.
The other thing, the the binding part of this to council, so what you're expending at this point is staff time, you're not expending hard dollars. So the binding portion, as council would see it, in in my estimation, would be an inter-local agreement and executing that, and that would tie you to to dollars.
Is there any way that, because I think it's a really good idea for some people from council and some people from the school board, but what about incorporating the county in that also? Maybe the county judge and one of the commissioners?
Yeah, and like I said, I think we, I think that needs to be a standing meeting. Whether we're talking about school resource officers or we're talking about the need for rain, I I just think it creates accountability among the the different jurisdictions if you're sitting across the table from them once a month.
Any other comments or concerns?
We will initiate this process, council, and report back to you as well as I'll see if we can't get a small group together with the three entities and maybe even four if you wanted to throw the chamber in there, but.
That'd be great.
We'll 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 move in that direction.
Thank you both very much. Next item is discussion regarding the August fifteen, twenty twenty-two department budget presentation.
Mayor and council, this is placed on the workshop agenda to just to provide you a a a quick look at the agenda for next Monday night in terms of departmental presentations. Just by the sheer time, we cannot include every single department. So you're not seeing, for example, golf course or library or some of those departments. We would certainly be open to your suggestions, if you had a strong feeling that you wanted to hear from the animal shelter, for example. We would be more than happy to put that on the agenda, either extend the time or add that on a future meeting, the twenty-eighth during workshop for that. But tentatively, the 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 budget presentations are related to particularly public works and utilities, parks, public safety, finance, billing and and collection. You do have the opportunity to check one of these items, one of the 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 presentations off your list here in about two seconds. Monica cannot be here next Monday, but she's prepared to give you her information system budget presentation at this time, so we'll do that after I've concluded and after I get your input. Is there anything else you'd like to see on that evening, other than the ones that you have listed? I've, we've tried to kind of hit the ones that have the major financial impact and also the major impact to our taxpayers.
Anybody have suggestions of anything else? This all looks good.
And certainly if you have something after the meeting, please feel free to give me a call. But I, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Monica at this point for IT.
Was fire included in that?
Yes, sir.
Did I mention?
Yes, police and fire.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight to discuss the FY twenty-two, twenty-three proposed IT department budget. The overall operating IT budget presented reflects business expense, routine maintenance, agreements, internet service, supplies, professional services, training, system replacement cost, and hardware and software licensing. I'll be brief and discuss any significant changes or needs in the proposed FY twenty-two, twenty-three IT budget outside of normal annual reoccurring operating costs in our department. The proposed FY twenty-two, twenty-three IT budget decreased from last budget year in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. This was due to an allocated additional IT position that has not been filled yet. We are still gathering information for that position and we will be looking at filling that position at a future date, just not right now. Outside of standard operating and maintenance on the city network, FY twenty-two, twenty-three projects and priorities that we have identified or included in the handout that I with I gave to you guys at the dais you have with you. There were three line items that increased from last fiscal year in the proposed FY twenty-two, twenty-three IT budget. The first one was in replacement equipment line item. This line item is used for the replacement of computer and printer needs for all departments. It will also be used to replace firewalls, servers, network storage device, basically any hardware that becomes obsolete due to failure or the need to update that. We replaced around fifteen to twenty computers, laptops on an annual basis, as well as around fifteen monitors and printers. There was an increase in this line item due to the need to replace two police department fiscal servers that is also listed as a CIP project. This was an increase of about eighteen thousand fifty-five dollars in that line item. The next line item that has increased is professional services. This line item is for services provided by TSM Consulting for twenty-four seven remote support and consulting on the city and the PD network, servers and firewalls. This line item is also used for services related to the expansion of fiber, phones and AV system. This line item has increased due to the need to add two ceiling drop microphones in the council chambers, which is in here. This will improve the acoustics and the recording output during our meetings. And this was an increase of sixteen hundred dollars, so not too bad. The last item that increased was office equipment maintenance. This is a line item that continues to increase due to our renewals. They increase a certain percentage every year, and as we add additional hardware, we also have ongoing support maintenance related to that additional hardware. So this line item typically always increases. In this particular case, it increased from FY twenty-one, twenty-two due to the need. We had some additional subscription licenses needed for securing the city's network. And also, we need additional storage space for off-site backups. This was an increase of three thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Do you have any questions?
Last time I was over, I noticed you were talking about a wall or to be built to keep your servers from being close to a window, did that happen?
It has not happened yet, it's still in this budget and we project to do that this year, we just haven't gotten to that particular project yet. But yes, it is still in the current budget.
So on the salaries from twenty-one, twenty-two, it looks like it was one eighty-six, forty-two is what was budgeted. But not all that was used because that position wasn't filled or was that used or allocated to different?
So, no, we did not fill that position. We've talked to the city manager, we've also talked to staff. And at this time, we're still gathering our information on what we want the addition, those needs to be for that particular position. And we just want to take it on a year-to-year basis and and see.
Yeah, I was asking about the money allocated towards that, was that just not used or used somewhere else? Just wasn't used, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Monica? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion regarding the Hostess House fifty percent design and development plan and timeline.
Mayor and council, we wanted to provide council with the opportunity to provide any feedback they had on the fifty percent design development plan set that was circulated at the last meeting. As soon as we sent our packet out, we received a hundred percent design and development plan set, and I've got just two copies here at the front table, if somebody wanted to grab them, we can certainly have some more copies in your box at City Hall tomorrow. But I think the, again, we did also send you a copy of the email that the architect included about his idea of keeping the stage where it is on the upper floor, moving the HVAC units up there and creating creating some storage behind the stage, which he estimates will save some money. One of the questions that we had when we did one of the walkthroughs was when we move the stage, then you have a gap in that flooring that you have to replace. And the most like flooring that we had was on the stage, so we would take all the flooring off that stage, use that to patch in to the existing and it would match, it's the same wood, and then do something completely different on the stage. So he indicated he thought, again, this was kind of a brainstorm, but he thought that was a good idea. The the email does also give you some perspective of the design process that he went through with staff and some of the items that we we looked at as well. But the, what, providing whatever information you give us, we can relate to Mr. Naylor. The next step is indicated for construction documents. At some point, we probably here in the next two or three weeks would invite Mr. Naylor up here just to run through the the design again. I think that would help refresh council and as well as staff on the current status of the project and what it would, what what the vision is and what it would look like once it's done.
Is it possible that could be done at the Hostess House?
Oh, I think that'd be a great idea.
I'm a little confused as to how we got a fifty percent design and then turn around and got a hundred percent design without us agreeing to the fifty percent.
If if you look at the, he's, he is doing a very good job of trying to stay on his schedule that's also included, that was provided June fifteen. But certainly that's what, one of the reasons we wanted to put this on the workshop tonight, to see if you guys did have any input.
Well, I I had mentioned to you once before, a discussion maybe at the next, whenever we can put it into our some of our workshops, whether it be at a council meeting or whatever. But some of us had wanted to talk about interior.
Correct.
Finishes and so on and so forth. And I'm a little unclear as to the the railing on this one. It's a wrought iron railing, is there any upgrade to it? I know that she's got a different configuration.
There is, there, I believe that there is upgrade in terms of ingress and egress, because we need to be able to get people off of the porch. But I'd have to, that's probably a good question that I could ask of him.
Is there any kind of handicap from the upper floor?
Handicap?
Yes.
Yes, the elevator will be upgraded to allow for that access.
Okay. Hope we're not using the same restroom door.
Pardon? No, sir. Well, and the other nice thing is you don't have to go outside, you would not have to go outside to get to the restroom anymore. Restroom's on both levels, so you know, an appropriate new commercial elevator.
One thing I'd also, it's not within his scope, but I think we ought to consider it in our budget workshop as far as upgrading that exterior in regards to maybe some grass.
Landscaping, you bet.
Landscaping.
Yes, sir.
Finley, when do you think we can see a projected cost? I'm looking at some of these emails, and one from Antonio says that the revised project cost hasn't been assembled yet. We'll work on that before the next review submission. When do you think we can anticipate seeing that?
Let me visit with him on that and see if we can't combine maybe a meeting onsite with Mr. Naylor and as well as some revised costs. Herb knows this, you don't know what it's going to cost until you bid it, but I think he can probably have a good idea. He certainly keeps his, keeps a handle on what construction costs are going on right now or what's happening. So hopefully, he can get us something that would at least be close or as volatile as things are still.
And this is irrigated, dried for fire?
Yes.
Because I don't think we show any kind of mechanical or plumbing or electrical or anything.
I believe it is, and I believe you do have the.
Strictly discuss, this is strictly and finishes.
In what you have in the, I believe there was MEP in there as well.
Okay, maybe, yeah. There's a mechanical.
I think there was, Randy.
Yeah, I got it. I missed it, I had to back.
Certainly, if you have anything that comes up, please feel free to give me a call. I'll try to get your question. If I can't answer them, or Chris can't answer them, or Ryan can't, then we'll get you an answer just as quickly as we can.
Next item, discussion and updates regarding FY 2022-2023 budget.
Mayor and Council, I apologize, but we did leave a stack of exhibits at your seat on the dais. Hopefully, those are a little easier than trying to read a slide on a screen or a slide on a handout we gave you. We really prepared this as a brief update to you. As I mentioned, we continue to review and update almost on a daily basis. I appreciate the work that Yvonne has put in on this and frankly, all of our staff has put in on this. We came to you last time with about an $81,000 surplus. That has been pared down slightly, but we're still in good shape. We still show about a $58,000 surplus. And we certainly recognize that, as you heard previously, that there's still a few unknowns that I think are in our capacity to handle related to the school district and Lampasses County. Just briefly, we just want to give you an update on the progress. We think it's still a good budget to work from. We are sitting in a surplus. We also want to make sure we let you know what the inclusions were that we discussed at our last meeting, how those are incorporated. The other thing we want to do is we want to also take a look at some comparisons. And I don't do this to pat ourselves on our back or say we're better in one regard than another community, but I think what we try to do with those is simply help you answer the question and help staff answer the question. You know, do our taxpayers get a good value for what they pay in utilities, what they pay for property tax? And we are not the lowest by any means in every category. However, I think overall, we like to give counsel that perspective, just kind of let you know what kind of value folks get for their money. We do certainly, the numbers that we look at tonight will change. At the very least, we've got to balance out and zero out our general fund and some of those other funds. We do that typically by transfer, so they will change, but this is a first look at it. This is our city by all operating fund, so those funds that we typically budget for, the general fund, electric, water wastewater, animal shelter, golf, airport, that it? Those are our, those are the funds that we actually consider our operating funds. So for FY 23, at least what we have on the books now is about a $32 million budget. That is, if you look, for example, at the salaries, the salaries represent about a 7.4% increase to our current budget. If you look all the way back to 2020, that's about a 20% increase to actual. And you say that's a huge gap, but remember, our actuals are always less than our budgeted numbers, and the reason for that is because we have vacancies and so, not of all those, just as Monica provided the example, we don't fill a lot of the positions where we're not 100% staff the entire year. Salaries and benefits take up about 30% of this budget. We also, I would caution you, as you look at FY 20 actual and FY 21 actual, those are after audit adjustments, so that's typically when we take out the capital expenditures, turn those into fixed assets, and then you see that as depreciation, which you will find in the 5,600 expense line contingency. You know, in 2020, we didn't budget for $1.1 million worth of contingency. The contingency, that is just a depreciation line within the major account. You can see that also, balanced budget currently, projected year end, the $590,000 is a little deceiving. I think it should be less than that because we did not go back, as we explained to you, and change the salary adjustments. We felt like we needed to focus on FY 23, so that number will change somewhat, but we still feel very good, particularly in terms of what we're seeing in terms of water, electric, and some of our other funds.
Finley, what does that 4,900 and 5,700 transfers, what does that represent?
That is transfers, so that's transfers from one department to another. If you look down below and you see the transfers in 5,700 on the expense line, those are transfers as an expenditure from some departments, and then they're shown as income into other funds, basically, where we transfer generally from water wastewater, electric. They also transfer into the debt fund. Water wastewater will transfer into the debt fund, so that, you'll see that basically as a movement of money between the funds. And the other thing that we will do is, if we do not need to transfer those funds, they stay where they were created. And you'll see a lot of that, when I give you the year-end report, typically, I have to go through and say, hey, where we didn't need to transfer it, we didn't transfer it. Where it was needed to balance that fund and we had budgeted funds for that, we transferred it, so. In terms of the individual funds, and again, these are the funds that we consider our normal operating funds. General fund is very close to balance, a $55,000 surplus. Water wastewater, as we've discussed previously, about a $200,000, $222,000 deficit is what we have forecast at this point for FY 23. And I think we explained to you that we're seeing some very steep cost increases in the ability to treat sewage and keep our plant-running injection sites. We're also seeing costs increase in terms of our BRA contracts for reservation of water as well as increased debt expense on that, on those facilities. We also want to take the opportunity to remind you about inclusions. We did talk about the use of retained earnings that were not, as those items that were not expensed in FY 22, and primarily, the item we're talking about is the pool liner, the electric department pickup, water wastewater phased increase, and you should have an exhibit at your place on the dais that looks like this. These are some examples that Yvonne came up with, and I'm just going to pull one or two of them out. So on the residential side, if we were to go up 225 on the readiness to serve or on the base price and then 10 cents a thousand gallons, for, you know, my family, we use about 10,000 gallons a month. That would be $3.25 as a resident, so that gives you an idea of what that impact would be. In the past, we've done impacts based on kind of levels of user, you know, a single person in a home or a family of four or a couple living, but this gives you an idea about what the cost would be exactly if somebody, a residential house, uses 10,000 or 15,000 or whatever combination. We do have different prices for inside the city versus outside the city, but it also gives you an idea. For example, on the commercial side, if you had a commercial rate, you use 20,000 gallons, your cost would go up about $4.25 a month. The other thing that we were, that is included in the numbers that you have before you, we did increase paving by 200,000. We typically have budgeted about $450,000 a year for paving, so we wanted to bump that up as well as the employee retention compensation. I'd also remind counsel that we still are maintaining a very aggressive capital program, not only within our operating budget, but also through the 22 COs as well as the ARPA Just a couple of notes on the calendar, which you also have in front of you. You will be asked to take some action at the meeting on the 28th. We want to remind you, of course, of the departmental presentations on August 15th. The meeting on the 28th, you will be asked to consider a proposed tax rate, and that proposed tax rate, I think, is, and I heard Kim Cagle say this from Colleen, is it's a not-to-exceed tax rate. You can certainly go up to that amount, but you cannot go over that amount, or you can go less than that amount. So we'll ask you to set a proposed tax rate at the next meeting. We are obviously shooting towards actionable items in September in terms of two readings of the ordinance adopting the budget as well as the tax rate. We did also get confirmation of our tax rates, and again, we may enter, may use old language in terms of effective and rollback, but the no-new revenue tax rate is 28.94 cents. Voter approval tax rate is 31.57 cents. We would, our current tax rate is 33.7 cents, so even if you went to the voter approval rate, that would still be a $2, excuse me, a 2 penny, 2.13 cents less than the current rate. And again, that's a function of our valuation. Oh, August 22nd, I'm sorry, that's right. Yeah, we're not having a meeting on the 28th.
Well, the paper here says the 24th, so which is it? The 24th or the 22nd?
Be the 22nd.
Hey, Finley, can you help me understand the no-new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate?
Yes, I'm going to explain it, then I'm going to look over my shoulder to make sure I explain it correctly, but.
Okay.
The no-new revenue tax rate is the amount, the same amount of revenue you collect on property that existed prior that was taxed last year. So anything that's newly developed would not be subject to that. So if you wanted to collect the same amount on the same number of properties, it would be 28.94 cents. The voter approval tax rate is the threshold at which legislature says, if you go up beyond that, then you will have to have voter approval. Is that?
Okay.
The old terminology was much more self-explanatory. If you use that terminology, it might make more sense.
Yeah, effective and rollback, basically, but.
Okay.
Sure was. And I think, and we'll look through some of the comparisons. I think it would be, staff would like you to consider as close to that voter approval tax rate as you felt comfortable, but we also, again, wanted to provide, there's a picture of my granddaughter. We also want to just talk a little bit about tax rate, utility rates, sales tax receipts, per capita valuation, and again, just try to talk a little bit about the value for our taxpayers. We've provided you a couple of items, and of course, this is almost impossible to see on a screen or on your paper, but you should have a document in front of you that's 11 by 17, looks like this. And again, we're not trying to win the game, right? We're just trying to give you an idea about how we line up with other communities. You know, we don't have the lowest tax rate, but the next two lowest is Horseshoe Bay and Fredericksburg, or the ones that are lower than ours are Horseshoe Bay and Fredericksburg. Fredericksburg has over a $2 billion valuation. Horseshoe Bay has a $2.2 billion valuation, and their per capita, and per capita is kind of a, it's not the most precise way, but it gives you an idea about what their valuation is, generally on average compared to ours. Ours is 58,000, Fredericksburg 190,000, and Horseshoe Bay 500,000, if you look at it just on a per capita basis. So, you know, would you rather be paying 33 cents in Lampasses or 19 cents in Fredericksburg? You know, that's, and again, we're not trying to win a game, we're just trying to show you, hey, this is how we line up. The other thing that this does, this is great hardware store aisle conversation. When people catch you in the hardware store and they say, you know, my taxes are really high, well, you know, your taxes might be high, but only 15% of your dollars goes to the city of Lampasses. In terms of this item, you can see our electric, we're certainly, we're neck and neck with Burnett. If you live in Kerrville or Fredericksburg, you're going to be paying less on your electric bill. If you're on PEC, you're going to be paying a little bit more. But I think the other item I'd point out to is, if you look under commercial, particularly large commercial, our rates are a little bit lower than a lot of those. So, you know, begs the question, is Kerrville or Fredericksburg subsidizing their residential on the backs of the commercial? I don't know, maybe not. I think they get enough sales tax and property tax that it probably pays for what they need to have it pay for. Water, certainly, there are a lot more yellow blocks on water than we have on electricity, so the people that have the highest water rates are those people that have built the newest plants and having to pay for new water treatment plants. If you're on groundwater, that's typically less expensive to treat and to furnish than surface water, and that's the case with Kerrville and Fredericksburg, their groundwater. But that, again, this, again, we're not trying to win a game, we're just trying to say, hey, we, you know, we, we're not being taxed. to say, hey, we, you know, we, we're not being taxed out of our house, and our utility rates are comparable, or a little bit less, so we, we like to provide this to give you some perspective. And then, like, like I said, on the tax rates, you know, I don't, I think people are very concerned about their tax rate, are, of course, because valuations continue to go up. Again, based on 21 tax rates, you know, you, about 15% of your bill goes to the city, 30% goes to the county, and about 55% goes to L I S D, and those are all, they, they all provide very important and critical services, but if you live in the city and you pick the phone up and you call the police, you're usually going to get somebody there pretty darn quick, so we're, we're proud of that service. What I'd ask you to do is certainly, we, we want to, we want to prepare well for our department presentations. Certainly, if there are any additional requests, or any other items that you would like us to talk about next Monday, please let us know. I didn't want to forget the, the comment from council member Pierce regarding the historic colored school and New Hope Baptist Church, certainly if we want to spend a little bit of time on talking about that, or direction on that, either now or next Monday. We will provide you, as of next Monday, some specific options for dealing with EMS dispatch, as well as the L I S D request. We have some room within our current budget. I think there are a couple of areas that we may have a little room, but I don't think much. We certainly, anything big, we would draw from reserves, or draw, or have to do something like that, but obviously, I'll say what we've always said through the budget process is, we do not want to presume this, that we've met 100% of your priorities. If there is another priority, we certainly want to hear from you, because we want to make sure that that's included in our budget. And obviously, you know, hopefully, we get seven out of seven of you saying that this is a thumbs up budget, but certainly, if you have other items that we need to deal with, we want, we'd, we'd like to know that. I'd be happy to answer any questions in terms of the current position, or any other items that you want us to give attention to. Thank you.
Any comments? Thanks, Finley. Next item is discussion of any item on the regular agenda. Does anyone want to discuss anything? Are we interested in a break, or do we want to continue? 10-minute break?
Short one.
Short break, we'll get an adjournment here. Move to adjourn workshop.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Back in five or 10 minutes, whoever gets back first.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this great group of people here. We thank you for this wonderful community and this great facility. We pray that you'll be with everyone here tonight, that we can communicate the best wishes of the people, exchange information in a professional and open way, and that good decisions can be made for the betterment of your people, which is ultimately your will. We ask that you particularly be with our community in our area, and that you could bring a little rain this way, that certainly would be nice if you see fit. Lord, we ask you to forgive us of our sins, watch over us in safety, and be with us till we can meet again. Amen.
Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, wild and invisible.
We have no presentations or proclamations going on, we'll go to public hearings. Citizen comment, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on this agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. We have no one. Citizen comments who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time. No one. Next item is the minutes, discussion and possible action concerning the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 25th, 2022.
I didn't see any corrections, recommend approval.
Second. Have a motion from Mayor Potem, and a second from Mr. Clark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has two items, discussion and possible action regarding purchases and charges in excess of 4,000 from July 1, 2022 to July 31, 2022. Discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance of the city of Lampasses, Texas, amending Chapter 78, School Safety Zones of the Code of Ordinances by adding school zones for Providence Christian Academy, that will be located inside the First Methodist Church at 2 Alexander Street, beginning fall 2022. Does anyone wish to remove either of those? How about a motion?
Prove the consent agenda is written.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no board or department reports. Next item is city manager operational report.
Just a few brief comments, mayor and council. Staff recently attended the Texas Public Power Association meeting, did get some good information from the interim director of ERCOT regarding the grid, and I think one of the things that he expressed is, you know, Twitter blows up as soon as he calls for conservation, right? Everybody's saying, oh, it's still broken, and he goes, I still think it's a good idea, because now, what they're doing is they're calling for conservation before an, an electric emergency event, or an energy emergency event, and he goes, you know, whether Twitter blows up or not, it's effective. People tend to be a little more cognizant about where they set their thermostats and things like that, and he says, it's probably kept us out of an E E A level. So that's, that was his common insight. They do take a look at that grid, two, three, four weeks out, as best they can, they try to anticipate. Fortunately, this year, even with new records being set almost on a weekly basis, they've stayed ahead of demand with the supply. Also heard a couple of interesting comments from the state comptroller, who said that, you know, it, it costs the average Texan about 5,000 more dollars a year, just for basic living expenses than it did last year, and, and every day, that we have a net gain of about 1,000 more Texans, so those are people that are moving in, births, deaths, et cetera, so we're continuing to see the diversity in our economy really being one of our saviors, according to Mr. Hager, and some very, very good, good things, and we'll, we'll share a few more of the T P P A stuff in, in future meetings. Badger Boulevard, staff was asked to inquire regarding the process and possible council action necessary to rename the entrance to Lampasses High School, Badger Boulevard. To that end, we've spent some time, and, and we, meaning Becky and Ryan, have spent time on this. I've just talked about it with them, but they're the ones that are actually doing the legwork on it, but talking with not only Tech Dot and SitCog, SitCog, of course, is responsible for our 911 addressing, they have to be at the table, and obviously, being off of 281, Tech Dot has to be at the table as well. We've still got a few things to work out. It's a kind of an interesting circumstance. This is like the driveway to your house. It is a, it's, it's not identified on any of the, it's identified on the construction documents, but it's not a separately defined access, even by private road or dedicated road, it is a driveway, a private driveway onto a private piece of property. And so how do you name a street based on those? Well, you, I think you have to be a little creative, and, and Becky and Ryan are going to continue to work on that. If it requires dedication, you know, then you got to have to define it by meets and bounds, and anyway, there, there's some hoops to jump through, it is a little bit unusual. We know that there's certainly one person at the high school that's very anxious about it, but it'll probably take us maybe till the 22nd before we can find a very clear path forward on that, but we'll continue to spend some time on that. Retention recruitment, I think one thing, the council's direction to increase staff's ability to attract and retain highly competent workforce, so one of the items that we have been working on, is, as well as compensation, is what other incentives, what other items can we use to make people feel good about working for the city of Lampasses? And to that end, you have in your packet a, a memo from the assistant city manager regarding that, in terms of possible items that were actually suggested by a survey of our workers, including, you know, is there a payoff for healthier living, for exercise, that sort of thing? And I think that's one that's easy to connect the dots on. You don't have, you don't use as many sick days if you exercise and eat well, and do those sorts of things. So that might be an item, as well as, you know, maybe there's some public facilities that we can either discount to employees, et cetera, but Ryan, did I miss anything, or anything you want to add on that?
No, we, we pretty much all the topics we were looking at, really what staff felt was important, when we asked them to do the correct, what was important to them, the basics were the rest of those things, the ones that you can leverage fairly quickly were the ones that we showed, unless there's some other ones that came up that were probably a little more difficult to start.
I would anticipate that we would bring you a, a little more specific recommendation, and with the opportunity for you to request formal action on that, and we could input that into our personnel policy, if that council wanted to consider that. Business Park, Ryan and Mandy both report continued good progress on the LEDC Business Park project. We are having some holdup on particularly the west extension of the roadway to the Old Austin Highway, primarily due to the availability of precast eight-by-five storm drains. They are continuing to work on other subsurface, so we don't know exactly how much of a holdup that will be. We did receive change order number one, and, and I, I think maybe I jinxed this when I said it, but I, I told both Ryan and Mandy that in a $2.7 million project, we get our first change order, and it's for $71,000 to the good. I think, all things considered, it's, you know, it's, it's probably a good thing. We do note that it will likely reduce the allocation from ARPA funds, in other words, we're getting savings on water and wastewater items, and it may actually be an increase in terms of what the LEDC will have to come up with, but we'll do some cost accounting, or estimated project accounting on that here in the next, next several days. EMS dispatch, we wanted to follow up with you on that. The letter of understanding that you executed with the county called for a couple of dates and milestones, August 1, we were to deliver cost estimates to the county, which Chief Cummings did do, and then on August 8, the county was supposed to provide us feedback as to those cost estimates. So we did meet with the county judge in the interim, and this morning, the mayor and I and Chief Cummings attended the commissioner's court meeting, and they approved an amount not to exceed 282,000. Now, bear in mind, there's nothing binding about this until we execute that interlocal agreement. The, the letter of understanding simply sets up how we're going to negotiate, and how we're going to get to the letter of, to the interlocal agreement, so we still have that big step to take. However, we've already talked to the city attorney, and she's begun work on that. She will be working with the county's council on that item. Depot, we wanted just to let you know that we, you know, we've talked about this over the years, about, oh, this is, it's going to happen, it's going to happen. Well, I'm, I'm pleased to report that after the June 22, June 2022 permits were issued, we've actually seen forms on the ground on Second Street, as well as a clearing for building number two, which the developer originally thought he was going to do in phases, building one first, and then building two. It appears now that he may be trying to strike while he's got somebody there that can pour and form concrete, so hopefully, that's, that's taken a step forward. We have been working with them in terms of communication on Second Street improvements, we want to coordinate those. Hannah Spring, we want to remind you that tomorrow, we should receive all of our bids in, or that's the bid, bid deadline for that project. As of this date, Bickie has sent out 10 bid packets, and just because you send a bid packet out, doesn't mean you're going to get a bid back, but Chris has also met with a number of people on site that, to inspect the project. We will get you the information, we won't wait till the 22nd to let you know the results of our bids, but we'll probably likely, or hopefully, be having, have an action item on the 22nd for you to consider that item. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Finley. Next item is unfinished business, we have none. New business, 7.1, discussion and selection of a website photo contest.
Mayor and city council, there were five photo entries for the month of July.
Anybody have a favorite?
Number one.
I would sec, I would second number one.
I guess I would move to, to pick number one as our winner. Sorry.
I vote yes.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number one.
Thank you.
7.2, discussion and possible action concerning the audit engagement letter for the city of Lampasses current fiscal year, which began October 1, 2021, and will end September 30, 2022.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the engagement letter from Singleton, Clark, that we've used for a number of years now. They did submit their engagement letter for a total of 41,400. I do apologize, on the recommendation, the numbers are wrong down there. It should be fiscal year '22 for the amount of 41,400. I failed to update that when I did the cover, and this will be for our fiscal year that ends this September 30.
Move to approve a engagement letter to engage Singleton, Clark and company to perform a fiscal audit for 2022, in the amount of 36,400, and a budget, an additional 5,000, for a total of 41, 41.5, 41.4?
41.4.
Yeah, in anticipation of, of the audit performed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
7.3, discussion and possible action regarding the appeal of an administrative denial of a roof sign for Larry's Lube Center.
Good evening, council. Okay, so in April of 2022, I received an application to reface and remove some old signs to include a roof sign for Larry's Lube. And I provided them with the information, letting them know that a roof sign is prohibited, however, we can reface and remove the other signs that they wish to improve. And I didn't get any response back to them for a few months, it kind of set kind of idle, and then in July, we picked back up conversations about it. I'm assuming they reached out to the property owner and decided they wanted to move forward. They wanted to go ahead and move forward with the refacing, but we didn't really discuss the actual roof permit itself. So again, I went ahead and issued permits for the refacing and the removal of obsolete signs, and they wanted to go ahead and submit a request to have considered, consideration by council to go ahead and do the roof sign as well. So I did not include in the packet the refacing part of it, because I already approved that. The only thing that I did include in here was the actual roof sign of what it's going to look like for y'all, to kind of have a visual of what they want to do. So typically, for roof signs, they're prohibited just because for safety factors, engineering, wind calcs, other things that are attributed to having a roof sign, and so it's just part of our zoning regs has always been, that we just don't allow roof signs. So this is the appropriate action that needs to be taken, is that for y'all to consider a variance, if you will, to my sign regulation to allow this to take place.
I'll remind everyone that we could have a motion to approve, and you do not have to vote for your motion, but to get some questions, let's get a motion to approve, deny, or approve with modifications.
Move to approve of the requested, or request for a roof sign at Larry's Lube Center, located at 913 South Chestnut.
A motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Yes. That's a lit sign?
Yes, it will be lit.
A legal lit sign? And the violation is because we don't allow any roof sign?
Correct. It is in our, and that's what I put on the actual agenda cover, the, the roof sign definition and that it is prohibited within our sign ordinance.
Would we, instead of the motion that we did, would we mention that we gave a variance to that ordinance?
No, you can just approve it. This is the appeal process, so the sign contractor themselves can come before council and ask that you were to allow them to have the roof permit as permitted. So at this point, you would just basically motion that you would allow them to have a roof permit.
And how do we deal with that? Oh, we're just doing it like a, I guess my question is, is, is that an arbitrary recommendation since, obviously, we may have another one? And I think the intent was to deal with those types individually. I don't know that it says that actually.
Well, the appeal process is that it comes back to us. That is their appeal.
All roof signs come back to us?
If, well, any, if they appeal it, they will come back to us.
If I deny any type of permit that is not in our zoning regs for whether it be the size, whether it be a roof sign, whatever their circumstances, it can be appealed before y'all, for y'all to make that determination whether you would like to approve it or not. Now, yes, this would set precedent, so if we do for one, we need to do for all, absolutely. We've come across that before. So there has to be good parameters set in place to where we don't just continue following the cycle, because otherwise there'd be no point in having it prohibited if it comes before y'all and y'all approve it. Now, with this case with Larry's Lube, it does sit off of Key Avenue. It is two blocks back, so it's on Chestnut. So there is not visibility off of Key per se, and that's the reasoning for this, for the roof sign. However, again, I mean, just to be fair, it is prohibited, so I wouldn't allow anybody else to have a roof sign. We'd go through the same process before y'all.
Thank you.
Just explain to me, I don't understand the, why would it be prohibited?
What is the ration, like the rationale behind prohibiting roof signs?
For safety, engineering purposes, wind calc, it's just a lot of risk taken when you have a roof sign. So I think it was just something...
What will this sign be made of and how will it be attached to the roof?
Why, I mean, the specifications are here included with this, if you wanted to review. I didn't review the specifics of how it would be done. I'm sure it would be up to standard, and I'm sure the wind calcs would be considered, it'd be engineered. I'm not worried necessarily about this sign's safety. I think just in general, when it was put in the sign regulation at the time, it was something for consideration because of the size could vary depending on the type of roof sign for the types of buildings where it was situated.
I understand, the McDonald's sign, that would not be considered a roof sign? Or the Whataburger sign?
You mean on the building itself or the pole sign?
Oh, the pole sign itself, that...
Pole sign is different, correct.
Okay, okay.
It looks like it's, with the angle iron brackets is how it's on there, and so, I mean, that, that, and they have to cover, or have insurance, like, for the property. So it really didn't come back on us if we did approve that.
The only thing that will come back on us is that it sets a precedent, that we have a ordinance that says you can't do it and we're allowing someone to do it.
Right. How do we, how do we determine our parameters to allow for one and not for all? So is it going to be size deciding, how it's installed, you know, the safety measures that come into play? So there's just a lot of questions that would be asked going forward. I'm not for or against it. I think it's a great opportunity for them to have new updated signs at their facility, but I just think that if we're going to do it, we need to be consistent in how we do it and how we move forward.
Is this one of those ordinances that you were saying that are so old, they need to be re-looked at?
No, actually, our sign regulations were just updated in 2018. We went through a very thorough, intense research of days and days of analyzing our definitions, types of signs, the size of the signs. So no, this is not old, but like I said, I think it comes back to how do you regulate a roof sign to make sure that it's safe? Because, again, engineering can fail. I mean, it could be not stable. We could get a, you know, windstorm, it could fall and hit somebody, and I just, not saying that would be on us per se, but just the accountability for, you know, the citizens. So I don't, I don't know what else to say.
Have they considered a pole sign?
I, I didn't ask them if they wanted a pole sign out there.
One thing with these, with these regulations and whatnot, I mean, they went through the right process, going through the appeal process to bring it up to us. And I mean, I guess there's a difference right here in looking at this proposed sign than someone putting a huge billboard on, on their building.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. It's very much reasonable. I, like I said, I mean, I think it'll look great, it'll add value to the property, it'll definitely stand out from Key Avenue, it'll do exactly what they want it to do. And if we need to modify and just have y'all review, you know, the roof signs, you know, how, if we want to put parameters on size or placement on the roof, I mean, we can, we can modify it and we can change it. I just want y'all to be aware that if we do move forward and approve it this evening, there may be others that we'll have to do the same for, and we just want to make sure that we're consistent.
That was one of my concerns, but you had, thank you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Are there other questions or concerns? We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
7.4, discussion and possible action regarding approval of professional services proposal between the city of Lampasses and Jones, He Roy and Associates Incorporated for Fairview Drive Drainage Study in the amount of $35,300. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. This particular proposal, again, is for the Fairview Drainage Study. I can share in the little over six months I've been in Lampasses in, in different roles as the public works director specifically. A lot of the questions or concerns that have been brought forth to me are, you know, tied to drainage specifically, and in a lot of these areas, with the little bit of rain we've had in the short time I've been here is something that I've tried to get out and look at. I was out in the field for the storm that we had late at night, probably about a month and a half, two months ago, and saw some of the drainage impacts. This particular study, there's a, there's a map actually attached that Jones, He Roy has put with this, if you want to look at that, to kind of give you an idea. But I did drive this project. I've talked with the engineer, and this is one of those projects where, just to give you a little bit of background, it begins, if you're familiar with Stone Valley, Daryl Finney subdivision, there's a large detention area there. This starts just to the south of that. There's some old concrete structures, so there's an old box, storm drain culvert that's basically sitting up against the driveway of a resident. That old box has begun to fail. You can, you can see daylight in it now, and so that was brought to our attention. There's also some curb inlets where this drainage study begins. It's all kind of right in that area. And so it, as it, as you can kind of see on the map, it meanders south. Some of this, to give you a little bit of insight as well, so where it begins up there, it, it's actually underground, so there's some storm drains that come across the road, tie in, then it runs underground, and then, as you see, the, the first little jog as you're going south there where it makes kind of a 45-degree turn, that's actually, opens back up at the kind of mid-block of the property, and there's some culverts there. They open back up, so it's an open channel. The water flows through now, and it stays kind of intermittently within that channel, goes across some roads. As you get closer to, I believe that's, well, I know by the time you get to third, it goes under the road and over the road. We have some flumes on top of the road in that low area, but I believe that first, there's, there's an area there where it comes across Fairview that goes back underground and comes back to an open drainage channel. And so a lot of the structures, you know, that I'd looked at, and I'm, and this is what the study will take into account, that Jones and He Roy is going to do, it's looking at some of those old structures, those old pipes. Are they still functioning? Are they sized accordingly? And the proposal itself covers the hydraulics, the hydraulic evaluation for a two-year, 10-year, 25-year, and 100-year storm event. So it's looking at ways to improve based on the hydraulics, what we need to do to improve those areas. It could be underground, it could be larger concrete channels, it could, you know, there's various things depending on what the engineering study finds. Also included will be a cost estimate in this proposal, a technical memorandum. One of the things I did reach out to ask one of the engineers was the additional services, you know, as authorized by the city only, that would be something they would come to us and ask, as well as, at times, and they've noted in the, in the proposal, that there may be a need to get on specific private property to, to complete the study. So there would be some right-of-entry agreements needed with some of the residents. Most of the drainage way, I would say, is, is, I've, I've looked in this area, there's not a lot of easements. So acquiring easements would be, you know, part of the process for those, for the engineering firm to identify that, Jones and He Roy, where we would actually need easements and what that would take. And so just, that's kind of a broad view of what this proposal is, and I feel like it's a pretty viable area. It does take on a lot of water, and we have a lot of areas around Lampasses that are similar. Stand for any questions?
Is this, so basically what they do is they do a study, and then after the study comes back, and then they actual do a architectural design to fix the problems or not fix it, or is that kind of what we're doing here?
At Councilman Pierce, very similar, very similar. So in this instance, this initial kind of field study, gathering the data where they'll basically take some elevation points, do some cross-section of some of the channels to get a rough idea of how much water they can carry currently and then what we would need to get to. But then, you're correct, after that's done, that's what this proposal is, then you would go into a design phase where they would actually design what types of structures should be a civil engineering design phase, where they would design the structures needed and the channels, you know, sized accordingly and those things, and try to take into account that.
I want to move to approve the professional services proposal between the city of Lampasses and Jones, He Roy and Associates Incorporated for Fairview Drive Drainage Study in the amount of $35,300.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yeah, I had one more question. So the...
Trying to get it so we could talk about it.
Gotcha, gotcha. So this cost is only for the looking at it, not the design part?
Correct.
Okay.
This would be to give us an idea of what the actual construction cost would be to lead us into the design phase if, if council so sees fit, and we, we feel like that's a viable project. Most likely would be a CIP project. This would be large, pretty costly. And so really, that's what it's doing, looking at the viability and what the cost would be.
I'm not familiar with, with what any of this should cost. I mean, is this on par for, like, what it should cost? I mean, 35 grand to talk about making plans and then pay for plans, and, I mean, do you think we need it?
I think, I, I feel like this is a really good start and that it is something that we need. I think the cost is, is within the realm of what these studies typically cost. This is a low-impact study, so, you know, some field surveying is going to be where a significant amount of cost goes, and then as well as the hydraulics. So really coming up with what should have been there possibly to begin with, and also taking into account all the other development around there. Where should we be looking in the future to address, you know, any of these storm water issues that we have in that area?
Like I said, I don't know much about this at all, just not familiar with this line of work, but looking at $12,000 for data collection, site visit, and site survey, I mean, you kind of have an idea of maybe what that includes, like with the data collection, like?
Sure. So the, so the data collection will be done with GPS, most likely. They have a surveyor come on site, they'll set up some control monumentation possibly. They'll do some minimal topographic work, so taking shots along, you know, where the stream bed is, taking shots on where all the assets are, locating all the GIS appurtenances that they can give us in a layer file. But if they, you know, as they build this out with the survey data, I would, and just to give you a quick example, on the skate park, and I know we're not talking about the skate park tonight, trying to get just a small area, everybody I think is pretty familiar where we're at at the park with the skate park, small area, if they were to do a topo just in that little area, the surveyor had quoted originally about $4,500 to do just that little area, do a grid. And so to put that in perspective, you know, $35,000, you know, a big, a big chunk of this, like you mentioned, $12,000, that seems reasonable. You'll, you'll have your equipment on the ground, you'll probably have one to two technicians out there doing the surveying and collecting all that data, so.
What's the timeline on getting it all done and going on to the next phase? I didn't, I didn't see that in here.
Timeline, that's a good question. We don't have that shown in the proposal. Some of that I'm sure would be tied to what other projects they have going on right now, but I'd hate to speak for Jones, He Roy on, you know, what type of timeframe to get this back to us. But I know they've done a little bit of legwork already. They've done some field visits and some site visits. So I think probably the biggest piece would be collecting the data and then running all the hydraulic calps. I mean, typically, if you're, you know, if you're doing the survey piece of this, you're probably a few months, probably two months to include everything, maybe a little bit less, and then the hydraulics is probably going to take, you know, three to four months, and that's depending on what other work they have trying to work it in. So I would say, you know, we would have something, I would think, in six months. But again, I don't want to speak for Jones, He Roy.
Any other concerns or questions?
It seems like a lot of money, and I'm not familiar with that, but, I mean, for...
Just for reference, anyone who has a professional engineer's license, they charge the same to all their clients. It, it's not like they can charge anything different to us than they do the next guy.
I wasn't insinuating that. I'm just saying I'm not familiar with this, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around these numbers, because all I see is data collection, site visit, and site survey. I mean, I don't know what that means, so that would be my concern, mayor.
And we, we can share, we did receive Jones, He Roy's layout of their professional engineering services contract on their hourly rates. It wasn't with this, it was a separate piece, but we can definitely share that, and it breaks down the hourly cost too, so you can kind of get some idea.
And that's just, that's only my concern. I get three line items and it's $35,000, and there's not much detail, so.
They, they did detail it out here in the letter a little bit, that makes it a little more clear. But... Task A, data collection. It says a little bit about what they're going to do.
I'd just say, Ryan, you need to keep us updated on this stuff once we execute this. I'd be interested in just hearing the, the process, that we don't give somebody just carte blanche, check on doing this, just give us some updates on it.
Sure.
I think, I think it needs to be done, and I'm very familiar with what's going on. I just, you know, I think some, some of the, in any types of construction, what frustrates me the most is timelines.
Right.
If somebody tells you something, then we're down the road, and, you know, we're back square one and chasing our tail around the, around the pole. And so I, that's all I, for me personally, that's what I would ask, is, just keep us updated on if, if we agree to do this.
We can definitely do that.
Has the Stone Valley development, like, increased the need to get this done? Because I think I remember when Stone Valley was first going in, there was some flooding and stuff right at the, like, at the beginning of it, and it was like some stuff had washed out.
So based on the engineering design on Stone Valley, it was, that large detention area was designed to detain whatever, you know, amount of flow that was coming in and created by the impervious area in that development. It was supposed to take care of that, that was engineered out. This is just outside of the limits, or right there on the limits of the subdivision. Now, the old, and, and again, this goes back to the engineer that designed that subdivision, he did take into account, and, and the curb inlets that are just outside that subdivision were identified and sized, and they were, they were in place, they were, they've been there years, probably 30, 40 years. So they were there before the development. So when that engineer engineered that, the drainage calculations for that roadway coming down that's going to empty in to those curb inlets should have been accounted for. I can't speak specifically to that, but I know in the engineering plan that that should have been taken into account too, so. Hopefully, they're not bringing more water ultimately, you know.
Any other comments or questions? We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Thank you. Thank you. 7.5, discussion and possible action regarding the award of a bid to Excel Construction Services for the installation of two Fontaine aluminum control gates on the clarifier splitter box at the West wastewater treatment facility in the amount of $47,100.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is one of those items that we did go out for bid, or estimates on, the, the Excel Company and Construction came in at $47,100. I know this is in need at the plant. We've got Van Sims, our water, wastewater manager here tonight, if you have specific questions on that, but it is something that we've been waiting to replace and, and upgrade. I don't know if there'll, there's any questions in regards to that?
Get a motion, and then we'll ask some questions.
I'd make a motion to award, quote, to Excel Construction in an amount of $47,100 for the installation of two Fontaine aluminum control gates, and authorize the city manager to execute all related documents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I was wondering myself if this is a, an emergency item, or do you have it planned all along? You've got it budgeted?
We have had it planned.
This is budgeted in the 21, 22 budget.
Okay. Any other questions?
And the, it came in, in, within your budget constraints, the 47?
Yes, ma'am.
Cool.
If there are no other questions, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we need to adjourn into executive session, and we will be relating to the authority of public power utility governing bodies to deliberate regarding competitive matters, utilities, deliberation about real property, deliberation concerning the potential purchase, excuse me, exchange, lease, acquisition, sale, and/or value of real property. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn into executive session.
Again. All those in favor, let's go.
Aye.
Mayor and council, I'd ask that Ryan Ward and Mandy Walsh be allowed in executive session without objection.
Sure.